We will eliminate. How about July eight?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second down on favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Hey, item one, discussion on rezoned proposal for West Creek subdivision to Manzanin map from A one to R one fifteen. Good Grover Felix, you know, and Bill Ross and.
Yeah. Great to see. So we've got Pat Burns and.
Randy, you're down. It's Westmore and Warren Water.
Guys. So we we would just like, you know, get some time to sit down and and show you. Um, what has been implemented since our last meeting? This is over that development called West Creek. And it's on, it's it fronts right on nine hundred South Street. I honestly, to be honest, I what I thought I could do is just share this image with you. To show you. What has been done since our last meeting, which go a couple of weeks ago we met. I know there was some issues with. Um, they wanted. Um, Commissioner Harvey wanted to see a road connection stubbing west, so they have taken care of that in their concept, which I'll show you.
Can you share that?
As well as.
Up on the screen?
I can, I I need the the zoom link. That I don't have, uh, unless they, do you know if if it's the same?
Agenda.
Okay, let me see here. And that agenda. In my calendar. Okay, so is it on the calendar invite?
It is, you have to scroll down. Yeah, it's not in the location section. It's in the description section.
Okay. Can I access that? Yeah, it's not in the, so the calendar invite that was sent to me did not include the zoom link.
I could.
Maybe you could send it over to me and bring this nap line.
Felix, I just sent it to you.
Okay.
Thanks, Christie. I know. Nice, because I was working on it, be another five minutes.
Yeah. Let's see. I'm just looking at my inbox to see, okay, wait for it to come through. I'm just connecting to Zoom right now. And it takes a second.
Do I need to give you permission to share? Your screen?
You might. Make join.
Make sure you're on mute too, little.
Alright, yeah, it looks like you do have permission to share, so I'll bring up that. So there's the plan. Where you can kind of see the both of the streets there.
Are those two streets going east? Is on the east side of the project?
Yes, those two streets on.
On the right hand side?
That's on the east, yes. And then that that one stop going west, that's new from last time.
And that's what Commissioner Harvey asked.
And as well as that pathway along this. Yes, the the west edge, that pathway. Yeah, as far as, as far as meeting those those standards for pathway and connectivity. What we do is we take a distance from nearest intersection or for pathways, it's around four hundred feet, for streets, it's around five hundred. And so this plan. Lines up pretty well with that. You also can see that they've got that road going straight through the center. Uh, connect up with adjacent properties, which is good. And I think ultimately, once. Once there's some development here on the west edge, you can see there's a gap there between sixty. How does that work? Sixty one fifty west street. Eventually, that will become, you know, public dedicated right of way and.
Uh, but right now you've only got the one, I guess, two access out on nine hundred.
That's right.
So what's the plan? I mean, those stub roads are great, but they didn't, they don't go anywhere.
That's true. They don't go anywhere. For the for the time being, the plan is to, this development would access straight onto nine hundred south.
How many units are we talking?
There there would need, uh, they could get up to eighty six units. That's that's as much as they could get with the R one fifteen.
What does the fire district said about those access points?
I haven't spoken with the fire district on that, but I have spoken with, uh, the county engineering and they're. I mean, they're they're well aware that nine hundred south is 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 capable of handling this type of, uh. Uh, traffic, but there would also obviously need to be some improvements made to the nine hundred south shoulder on that north side.
For the entirety of the project?
Yes.
Um, isn't the fire district's rule thirty, no more than thirty two with one access?
Usually.
And then and then at, if there are two accesses, then there's no limit?
Not that I'm aware, no. Additional access points would would accommodate for. For those, yeah. But, um, and there also was mention of, there was concerns over the the sewer and the sewer plan. As far as the, and and so I believe Pat has done some work with that, with with his engineer to work out a a plan. And as far as, you know, water and sewer.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
You want to tell us about that?
Sure.
And Stephanie, feel free to chime in. I know you lot know a lot about the sewer out there. So interested in your opinion too.
So this is, uh. Sewer plan that, uh, that I put together, but we piggybacked off of the Weaver County sewer plan. And Weaver County did. And that's what, here's another one if you guys want. So the lift station location is the existing lift station location that is being worked through with with Black Pine. I've talked with Kevin Hall and with Clay Marriott over Weaver. Uh, Central Weaver Sewer. And they said they were okay if we moved the lift station, we could work that out to go west more if we needed to.
Where's located on this map?
The green box.
Okay.
Right there.
Okay.
Uh, talked with Sean and he was, he said it's whatever Central Weaver says. And and they both agreed with the ARPA funds that it was still okay to move it wherever the engineers decided was okay. So that answered that.
Their board make that decision?
No.
That has to go through the board.
I.
Because that's an additional, that's an additional pipe that isn't in the budget with the PID. And that is a board decision. And will there, will will the district have to pay for that additional pipe? Uh, Central Weaver Sewer would, yeah.
Central, that'd be a central.
Decision, that'd be their decision.
This and this hasn't come to Central Weaver.
Well, it sounds like you've talked to Kevin.
Correct.
So are you guys?
Come to the board.
No, it has not.
This is a board decision.
Yeah.
So my concern is, there's a couple of things. One is.
Hold on, hold on. I'm fine with leaving it here. I am not saying we need to change it. I had just brought it up and you guys brought the concern, so I I had them addressed from Kevin and Clay. And they did say we have to present it to the board, but if it's not costing any more money, then why would they would, they don't see that it would be a problem, but I'm not proposing to move it.
Well, there's some strings attached to it and that from the from the state government. That's from the state division of water quality. Where it really can't be moved. It's it's the the money that's funding part of that. Is already in a contract.
I'm fine with.
All right.
I'm not attacking that.
So if it can be moved, then you would just send that sewer this direction to the east. Yeah.
I have tons of arguments why it should be moved, but I'm not even addressing that right now. That's, this is only for a reason anyway.
Okay, go ahead.
So where where it sits right now? Fuck it, that works for me. And like I said, I've been working with Black Pine. And the Peterson Group and, uh, you know, we're all on board putting, working with this sewer together. Um, the good thing is it brings more funds to the sewer. That's that's very important.
Yeah, and that's the other reason it wouldn't be able to be moved out of the PID boundary, because it's being funded by a public infrastructure industry. So that's that's another reason why we can't move it legally.
So, um. Uh, I have had my engineer do all of this to. Take a gravity fed sewer actually all the way to the end of Longhorn, which has already been rezoned and. And, uh, I'm developing that and I'm I'm developing a piece next to it and then working with the Peterson Group and that's why. I have spent as much, I'm not just doing this one thirty acre piece. I'm more of master planning the whole west of the river, in my opinion, of what's going, because you guys know I'm all, I'm also on. With the West Bridge, which is the other side of the railroad track, so. Definitely, my vision is a lot bigger than just one development and so. That's why I went ahead and paid to have this study done, to do this, this is all on my dime as, and I'll give everybody the information. It's not like I'm trying to keep it. I'm just. Paying for it because I move a little faster than.
So you want a line that goes from, uh. Sixty seven to further than that?
No, 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 no. If you look right here, this red line at the top.
Oh, okay. All right.
Which would be here.
Yep, okay. But sixty, from nine hundred, sixty seven, nine hundred, that's a trunk line. That goes into the Black Pine Station.
Correct.
So that would have to be owned by a governing body such as LMSA, Central Weaver.
Believe they agree.
Okay.
But I assume you guys want somebody to pay for that.
Well, yeah, we we, I mean, no one's, that's pretty much how Central Weaver.
Oh, no, I'm agreeing. That's that's what I'm saying.
Taking new lines, so that's why I'm surprised that Kevin said that, because they aren't taking any new lines. LMSA would be willing to take the line, but they're not going to pay to have it. But they would take it, they would assume it.
No, that's why, and that's what I'm saying is. I am bringing the funds to pay for this. That's why I'm doing, I couldn't do it off of one development.
Yeah, we just wouldn't be able to move the lift station because of.
Got it. No, I'm fine with that.
Problems with that.
It still works for me.
Okay.
In my opinion, it should move, but you got a lot, just to help push it even further away. But again.
Yep.
This still works for me.
Yeah, and you'd have two entities that would be probably be willing to take it. LMSA would be one and the other would be Central Weaver.
Um, so I just wanted to address the fact that we have figured out with the engineering, working it out so that, and this is. Up to a thirty six inch line, but we can definitely reduce it. I don't know why they're requiring a thirty six inch line. That is.
Who is Central Weaver?
Just in that study.
Oh, so that, is it the one we did back in twenty twenty two? So the reason that is is because we're trying to put regional infrastructure out there. And anything that goes in has to have a regional component. We don't want to have to go back in and re dig it up and put bigger lines. That's why we, that's why we created the PID for Black Pine, because the infrastructure lift is, they're able to do a PID. And bond for it, because their infrastructure lift was so hard, was so big, and we put that in our development agreement. So it was a regional, it's a regional system.
Gotcha.
So anything going in, we'd we'd want to see as a regional, have a regional component, which is why, that's why the study had that larger line in it. Okay, go ahead, continue.
Um, that that's basically it on the sewer. I was just showing that I have it designed, we can work that and I will be responsible for putting that sewer into the station. I don't have a problem with that. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to address that and we've shot all the elevations, it's all been surveyed, this has been. You know, we know what size lines we have to do, what flow we can still get, what depth we can get, stuff like that, so.
Felix, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I mean, as far as just the development agreement, we're just working out some final details. We've got the development agreement pretty much ready to go. A lot of the stuff is standard to what you've seen in there. We took those comments from, um, Commissioner Harvey last, took out any reference to like. Product, company names and brands and things and, uh, we also are working with the developer to come up with agreement for a fence along nine hundred south. Um, that's something that they feel like they they were, they were kind of caught off guard by that requirement. And so, um, I think we're we're going to have to maybe do a little more negotiation with the developer on a fence along nine hundred south, being that. Uh, none of these driveways are going to access onto nine hundred south. And so it it kind of makes sense to have a fence along that, um, of course, on the on the on the north side of the pathway. On nine hundred south and that way, I mean, there there would be some breaks in that fence as well for those pathway intersections on nine hundred south. And so we're hoping to just have this area that's really beautified and inviting for pedestrians along nine hundred south at some point. And so, um. Whether that be some type of wall, maybe a split rail fence, I mean, any preferences on on maybe design of that fence or. If if fence is even necessary in this circumstance.
Fence on nine hundred south?
Yeah. Yeah. On the north side.
I don't know, have a preference.
Yes. And in the development agreement, we we've mentioned that it would be a nice fence, you know, stone or rock fence or, you know, no vinyl.
The only issue I have with fences is that as you do developments along the whole road, they all start to look different. Then there's not any continuity to that look. That's the issue that I have with that.
I don't disagree with that. Yeah, well, I still have the same issues I brought up. Um, there's no way I would vote for. Putting eighty homes on, and again, you showed the plot up here, but your only access you really have is one out on nine hundred south. I mean, that's great if it was done, but it's not done. So I've got two issues. Number one, put eighty that homes back there, hold on. With one access, I mean, we have code in place on the county that we've on a one, on a dead, basically it's a dead end street. It's a dead end, it's a dead end street right now, right? It is. So in the county, we wouldn't allow over eleven homes. To go in without a secondary access. Why would we allow eighty? I mean, it just muggles my mind that we'd even consider, and especially, I mean, maybe if it's. Maybe if it's on sixty seven or one of the, uh. You know, north, south, but nine hundred, that's, you've got trucks, big trucks traveling down there. You know, sixty, sixty five miles an hour, and I could just see somebody pulling out on that and getting creamed. Um, so, yeah, I've got, I've got issues with that. And then I'd I'd want to see, again, to put the cart before, this is all great about. Central Weaver, but I haven't heard about this at one board meeting and I've been to all of them the last year and a half. Uh, I'd want to see a will serve letter. That this is actually going to work, whether it's LMSA or sent, so there's got to be some coordination.
We we have that. So what the fire code states is you can have two accesses on the same road. As long as you have a certain distance between the two roads, then that's your two ingress egresses that allows you to do more than thirty knots. It's nine hundred, you can go this way or that way, so it's not a one way, it's not a dead end road. You can go left or right.
No, I'm trying to stand in coming out of your subdivision.
But it's not a dead end, it's a road that goes east or west.
Should we take a?
I mean, I have developments all over the state that have two accesses.
Yeah, how many people are going to go west?
In an emergency, they can go west to get out. That's what I'm saying. That's what the whole point of the fire code is, is if you're stuck.
The ability.
For safety reasons, you only have one ingress and one egress to get in and out. This has two, so therefore that that requirement doesn't fall into this development.
How far apart are they?
I can't remember what it is, it's, uh.
Even though that's not, even though that's not a state road, but.
It's four hundred something. I can't remember what it is. It's not, uh. Do you remember what that is, Felix?
Is that regulated by the fire district?
Yeah.
The distance?
Yeah, I'm not sure. It's the international fire code, do they follow for that?
Do you have something from the fire district, a letter?
I can get one. Normally don't require one for a rezone, but I can get it if that's what's needed, but I mean, I do developments. All over, I know this is fire.
Because, because, obviously, has concerns, so. Yeah.
That would make me feel better too, but I, you know, you you can't build anything without that anyway.
Correct.
So. As far as the access, as far as the access goes, I mean, yeah, if the if the fire district is approves that. That's their code and that's the reason for that. Um, I don't assume it will be too long before this piece in between develops. I don't know what's on that land right now.
Yeah.
I mean. We're really just looking at all this raw ground that's eventually, you know, twenty years down the road or thirty, it's all going to be connected. It has to start somewhere and I, and I don't know.
No, absolutely. I just like, I like the piece of the puzzle, puzzle will be a little more in place before we do rezones. You know, and, you know, it makes sense. You know, why is, why isn't this piece, why don't you have this piece that connects here to sixty one fifty? As in your flat?
I don't own it.
Well, I guess, you know, I'm saying it would make a lot of difference. You had an access here, which is a true access, and then you have one here. Because this is, this road's actually in right now, is it not?
Correct.
So.
But it ends too.
It it ends this way, so yeah.
Just a gravel.
Yeah, right.
Would it be helpful for, um, for them to put together a. Basically, an E, an E, a plan set showing the multiple in an, you know, in an egress and, um, ingress and egress points. And in case there's an emergency, where they could evacuate from. Uh, obviously.
Like a route, you're saying?
Yes, route, routes in the vicinity that would take them back to other main roads.
Well, I'm not as concerned about an emergency as I am about having eighty people bob up in there and trying to get out on nine hundred. Without having, you know, without having a true access down maybe to to sixty seven or sixty one fifty. Uh, you got to have an artillery road there somewhere.
That's it.
So, I mean.
And it may just be timing right now. It's not quite ready for that.
That's, that's my position now. I mean, eventually, you're exactly right, it will go. But I think we owe it to the residents out there to make sure we don't. And especially with our, what we've got with the inland port out there. Uh, there's a, you know.
Our absorption rate is pretty high for truck traffic on that road.
Yeah.
Once, when we did our absorption rate stu- uh, study for inland port, it's it's pretty, it's pretty high, so. Commissioner Farah, what do you, what would you have to see in the future to be more comfortable with that, um, an expansion of this project over to sixty one fifty? Or are you thinking all the way?
Well, I think if you took, I'd like to see an extension up here to sixty one fifty with a dedicated. County road through there.
And I recognize that you don't own that. I'm just, I just want to know where he's at.
Sure. But, yeah, to me, this does, to me, that development should be here on sixty one fifty or or move that road to sixty one fifty, one of the two. But you've got to have, and then I could probably live with the one here. But I, so.
Again, you're still going to have just two accesses on the nine hundred, because you can't go north.
Yeah, you're still going to have, but to me, this one's already in place. So at least you you have two, and I think, uh.
Would he just remove the one? Because as as of now, the concept shows two accesses from West Creek, connecting into nine hundred south.
Right.
So you're saying if, if he's able to slide over here to the what, the east, then you don't need one.
So he would eliminate one of the accesses?
I'd probably be okay with that. And the farther apart, the better, in my opinion.
I don't know why you wouldn't want to keep two, that, then that gives three exits.
Well.
I don't know.
I.
It's just, it's so early in the game, I guess.
The more, the more the better, but I'm just saying that. Yeah, I just gets concerned. And I probably, I wouldn't have these issues if it wasn't the traffic that we're seeing on that road.
The type of traffic.
The type of traffic, yeah.
Sure.
And did we require a traffic study?
At subdivision level, we do typically. Yeah, rezone, we could rezone, but you know, typically we haven't, uh, we get into that at the subdivision.
Right. So. I guess I just need a little more information. Obviously, Central Weaver plays into this. I'd like to see something definitive from Central Weaver. So.
And the fire district?
And the fire district. Yeah.
So the fire district would chime in about the access.
Yeah, I have a feeling they're going to say it's okay, because you have two of them.
Yeah, yeah. But I'd like to have them address the number of units back there too.
Okay. You can get that.
Well, so if they give the commitment, let's make sure that they commit to the eighty some units.
Yeah, good.
As far as I'm concerned, I I. This is generally not done, all of this is not done at the rezone level, sort of subdivision level. I'm okay moving forward. Because it's just a rezone. To acknowledge your point, though, Commissioner Farah, we did this in West Haven often, we adopted a development agreement and there was a clause in there that said. This development didn't happen, it goes back. So you start at square one, it's not just, this was rezoned, so now I could do this. Um, and I don't know if that's something we can look at, you know, if these questions aren't addressed.
Yeah.
It reverts back to the original zone, anyway. I don't have as much heartburn over the reason, just because there are other steps in place to.
Yeah, but I think, you know, that's, you hit it right on the head, is that once we do the rezone. Then, you know, I mean, I don't have this works.
Yeah.
Then we've kind of made the commitment that we'll move ahead. Um, I just think there's enough questions here. I hate giving a rezone, because now we get the rezone, well, it's the next, the next. Presentation, but it gave me the rezone, why don't you approve my damn subdivision? So I think it just starts to, so I I'd like to have all those questions answered before that happens.
Okay.
Personally, so that's me.
Hey.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so just kind of general consensus, is, you think it's appropriate to get it scheduled for a public hearing? With with you yet, or should we take care of those things first?
I mean, based upon these concerns.
I think you're way ahead of that, yeah.
Premature. Address before we do that.
I have one final comment, uh, thirty inch gravity, not thirty six, just FYI, if you want to downsize that for cost. Thanks, Stephanie. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Well, thanks for the input about the sewer too, because I know that's. It's, okay.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does more to work from.
Maybe I do. I'll bring him up to speed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where's Mr. Crockett?
If Mr. Crockett's out there, we'll move right along.
Good, thanks, guys.
See you now.
Thank you. Thanks, Felix.
This a closed session with?
There.
There he is.
Wow.
All right.
Any other direct like stairway or elevator?
There's Chris Crockett's little brother.
Yeah, what happened to Chris?
Right?
All right, item three on our agenda, the discussion regarding notice of claims, Mr. Chris Crockett.
Um, commissioners, this one, I, if it's okay, I would request that we go into.
Okay.
Closed session to talk about pending or reasonably imminent litigation. I'm not going to be, I'm going to be talking about different cases, but. I'm going to be showing you our claims report, so you can get an idea of what that looks like.
It's probably appropriate. I'm sure I'd make a motion that we go into closed session.
I'll second that, on the favor.
Aye.
Aye. Um. Um. Any relief? Thanks, Felix.
How are you doing?
Very well. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Let's see. We welcome you, those online, those in person. We welcome you here to our commission. A Weaver County Board of Commissioners work session. Reminder that this is a. This is a public meeting, not a public hearing, so no public comments will be taken. It is as a reminder, this is a continuation of our meeting held on this Monday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty four. This is item, item number four on the agenda is a discussion regarding Cowboy Partners Form Base Rezone in Eden. We have Charlie Ewart, Rick Grover, Sean Wilkinson is excused. Courtland Erickson is also excused, but representing legal is Chris Crockett. Portland's online, sorry, Gary Myers and Chris Zerek. And so we welcome you here, Charlie. I'm going to Bill Ross, welcome here representing Sean Wilkinson. Thank you, Mr. Ewart.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Please come in with your, you've got those pearl buttons on there today, mother of pearl buttons. That's quite the.
Just thinking of our agricultural heritage here.
Well, you know, I've been in the area, but I've never seen a mother of pearl wash a shore off the Great Salt Lake.
You're probably right. I'll share with you guys my screen here.
Recording in progress.
That's probably called dirty all your things.
So. Still me. Hello. There we go. Okay. So what we have here, I left this on your guys' desk late or early Friday, just so you can get through the memo to read through it. But we've got a request from Caffey Partners, this is Chris Zerek from Caffey Partners, to change some property in the Ogden Valley to the form based zone. The particular property we're talking about, let's just go straight to that. Is this property right here? So this property over here, that's the Eden Crossing Form Base Rezone that was done a few months ago. This red over here, that's the C V two zone. So if this is changed to the form based zone, it effectively ties the two together, the two, the C V two zone on the form based zone by putting them together. The Valley Market. Owner, they've submitted a form based reason request as well, so they've got this property here. It hasn't gotten very far in the process yet. We did meet with them a couple of months ago and they're working on hiring a consultant to help them get through the form base reason process. So you can see there will, if this gets rezone, there'd be, and this gets rezone, excuse me, this property and this property, these two parcels will be essentially the only two parcels surrounded by form base zoning. Can you see where my arrows are?
No, it's right there in that little.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, those two up there and then these two down here, can you see that?
Mm hmm.
Okay, those will be surrounded by form base and they've currently got residences on them. So they're currently residential slash agricultural, large lot residential.
So these. Yeah. These hills piece right there.
Yeah. We have also received word from G B, who owns this property here that he wants to do form base as well. He just hasn't submitted application yet for it. So just for your information on how that works or is going to work.
Which one was that, Charlie? I saw on the top north side.
Okay, yes, north, that's what I thought. Okay. So.
The hashed out one is the Col Bay Ranch piece that's already been done, right?
That's right. That's the master plan development overlay for Col Bay. Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet. Um, couple of things to note, I wanted to make sure you guys heard what the planning commission's recommendation was. Their recommendation is for denial. But when we were working with the planning commission on this, we said, you know, sometimes when you recommend denial, it's really helpful if the commissioners want to go in a different direction to actually have some guidance. And so they were willing to put together a list of stipulations. They wanted to make sure it was very clear that putting together a list of stipulations in case you guys do want to approve this is not their default of maybe we're okay with it. They wanted to make it very clear, we're not okay with it. So I want to make sure that that's clear to you guys as well. The past couple of four base reasons, the planning commission has been a little concerned that maybe staff didn't communicate their position very fairly. So hopefully that was fair enough.
I think you did a good job there, Charlie.
With their recommendation for denial, they put together eight different findings. I just want to go over these very briefly, briefly with you guys. These are verbatim findings, by the way, so some of it doesn't read very clearly. So number one, the Ogden Valley General Plan calls for small villages that do not overwhelm or compete with the rural nature of the valley. Allowing this rezone will result in a large even village that may be more similar to a small city than a village. Number two, Ogden Valley General Plan recommends commercial operations to be established on properties currently zoned for commercial before resorting new properties to commercial. Number three, this proposed development and rezone is better suited for other area in Eden, such as on properties that are currently zoned C V two. So two and three kind of go together. Four, the proposed reason will surround two existing large lot residential parcels with incompatible high, higher density uses. Five, the proposed reason will result in development that spans highway one fifty eight, which will create a safety challenge for existing and future occupants. Six, the reason is not sufficiently supported by the general public and is not beneficial for the overall health, safety and welfare of the community. Seven, form based zoning is a new concept. The mind of the community is not in form based zoning, so this is all new and therefore the planning aspect of this is not, that's kind of set in. Form base has only been around since about three years. It's not been allowed or. Not, not everybody in the valley understands this. And so one of my recommendations for denial is because it is so new, nobody knows what, kind of what's happening and what possibilities could happen. Trevor Schuman made the motion and he further clarified to me in an email. What's happening and what possibilities can happen? He, he was saying that where you've got the different types of uses in form base, you've got mixed use vehicle oriented, multifamily, small lot residential. There's a variety of uses that can happen on each of those. And because it's, this isn't very well understood by a lot of people, people don't understand how those different uses potentially interact with each other. And number eight, I feel it's for planning in, in approving this because the highway runs through there. As mentioned, it splits the highway, we have an opportunity to plan a space that might have drivable on one side and walkable on the other with what has been approved. So even crossing could be walkable and drivable, could be on the other side of the highway. And we can have major thoroughfare right to Powder Mountain. And if we approve this, we are now creating a mix that causes problems. I think we can do better in our planning to do that than just to say, well, we generally have a map. I think we need to spend more time on that map. If I can summarize this and hopefully, I'm sure Schuman is okay with that. I think their desire is to readdress the entire Eden area street regulating plan and maybe fine tune it to go, go in accordance more with what they think that area plan should look like. So there's been some conflicting information coming from the planning commission. I've heard one planning commissioner say. That they don't agree with number seven. One budget missioner said, this isn't about the community not understanding it. This is about the more and more the community does understand it, the less and less they like it. With respect and respectfully to that commissioner, I, I don't think that's true. I don't think that's factual. I think that's a, that's a great representation of what opinion that's out there. But I think the fact is, is the more folks tell, at least report to me into the planning commission, what's wrong with form based zone? The, the more it's clear to me that they don't understand the form based zone. One example is there was one gentleman from the public, and I think I've given you this anecdote before, came to the planning commission meeting a little while back. Hold up five page document, said this is the F R three zone, it's five pages. This is the form based zone and he said it's a hundred and fifty pages, but it's not, it's forty pages. So five pages to forty pages means form basis more complicated in his mind, and I think in a lot of people's minds. However, or mid zone consolidates so many different requirements that are found scattered throughout the rest of your code. I mean, you've got hundreds of pages of code and the F R three zone just tells you what standards are allowed and required in uses for that F R three zone. It doesn't tell you how to sub the by your property, it doesn't tell you how wide the streets need to be, it doesn't tell you any of the intricate details or, or specificities of how each use might be regulated. All that stuff is spread throughout other sections of your code. So if we were to do a comparison, side by side comparison. The form basis zone represents probably nine of your other types of zones and it does it in forty pages. So if you take nine of those other types of zones by five pages each or so, you get about forty five pages. Form based zone does that plus adds in your street regulations. It adds in your designs for sidewalks, for, for your designs for buildings. It consolidates so much into one document that people are saying it's too complicated. But they're not recognizing that your existing zones, they're not going to know even where to go. They got to call me to find out where to go to find the design standards for commercial buildings, for example, in your other ordinances. So from a planning perspective, and as you're, one of your planning staff, I still think form base is the ideal way to go for most types of results, both in Western Weaver and Ogden Valley. But if we're to listen to the confusion that the public has about form based zones. But if we're to listen to the confusion that the public has about form based zones. To me, they're not complaining about form based zones. They're complaining about development. And development right now just happens to wear the face of form base. But I don't know that they fully understand that. Eden Crossing, for example, if you guys wanted to approve Eden Crossing as a CB two. With some multifamily and some small lot residential, maybe FR three. You could have, and it would have been the, almost the exact same product. It just would have been a lot more zoning regulations. To apply to it with frankly, less flexibility on, on the side of development. Um, anyway, so. There's my plug for form base. I don't think we should throw the baby out with the bath water. However, I totally understand why some members of the public are confused. About, um, how it's written. Any one of them might be listening or who are talking to you guys, send them my way, because I would love to have a conversation with everyone, uh, to, to talk about why. Uh, four bases, a better solution for the creation of village areas. That said, if we wanted to create the Eden area village with your existing zones, we could. We could do see the existing CB two zone or expansion of CB two. We could do CBR one zone. We could do FR three zone, which is multifamily. We could just do R three. Which, uh, doesn't exist in the valley, but it does exist in Western Weaver. So there are a number of different ways that we could do it with just standard zones if you wanted to. Okay. All that said, um, the commissioners did tell us that if you end up doing, uh, approving this free zone. They would like to see this list of. Seven. Um, requirement, seven with a bunch of subparts requirement. On how to go about developing, developing that property. And again, that's in the, the write up that I like on, on your desk. So you can kind of see how that, how that shakes out. Um. As far as some of the concerns that they have. You can tell from their findings, they're concerned about highway one fifty eight going through the middle of this, um, and potentially not being, uh. Not wanting to interrupt the flow of traffic to powder mountain by having a main street there, but also not wanting to have those more intense uses on both sides. So one of the things that they're asking for is let's put, if you're going to put a park on the west side, put a park on the east side. So we don't have kids scurrying across the road. One thing that I don't know if they fully comprehended was, um, highway one fifty eight would need to be brought up to our form based standards. And I started the conversation with you dot. You dot says, no, you're not going to do angle parking on one fifty eight, but we're okay if we start talking about parallel parking on one fifty eight. They're concerned about where snow, snow storage is going to go and they're going to, they're going to be, um, they're going to want to weigh in on how frequently. Uh, streets intersect with it. But other than that, we'd be looking to the developer to essentially rebuild that entire section of one fifty eight, almost from the, the roundabout all the way up to the canal. Um, where you've got curb gutter sidewalk on both sides, street parking, bike lanes, et cetera. So I don't know if that was fully understood by the planning commission when they worked at this. As you look through their, um, stipulations, they are calling for quite a bit of safety improvements along with one fifty eight, which would already be required by that. Okay, all that said, um. Staff, uh. Recommendation was for approval. I identified all the reasons why the general plan suggests that. Uh, this could potentially should be approved. Um. There is one provision, just like with the Eden Crossing Development, one provision in the general plan that suggests maybe it shouldn't be approved. And that is that. Uh. Existing commercial properties should be developed first before more properties are, are reasonable to commercial. The general plan does say that. But everywhere else in the plan, as far as, uh, specifications goes, as far as recommendation goes, this checks all those boxes. So I, on the whole, in my recommendation, if you're looking at ways to build an economy of scale to provide infrastructure, sewer, uh, water, uh, streets. In a manner that is actually going to. Provide a baseline where you can actually create village streets and infrastructure. This is the way to do it. You grab a, a couple of properties that are large. You get some master plan ideas going on in there. You get some outside investment being invested in there. And then from there. You've got infrastructure a lot closer to those other commercial properties where they can then change their uses to. Or base or whatever it is that chooses to do. They don't have to reserve so much property or subject systems at that point. Um. I'll let you guys ask questions and then, um, I'm sure, uh. Chris will have some discussion points for you guys too. If you have any questions, right?
Mr. Bowles, any questions?
No, thanks for this report. I really appreciate you.
Mr. Broler, any questions?
All right now. Thank you.
Very good. What's the best way to, um? Project?
Yes.
Here, why don't I, uh, which one are you looking at? You're looking at what was submitted?
Yeah, they just sent me the, the document, very similar to what has been shown here previously. Well, Charlie explained that. Thank you very much for giving me some time to talk today and, um, you know, I'll spend just a couple of minutes going through a little bit of, um, the. Uh, some of the materials that we talked about through our process with the planning commission. Um, we have been, uh. We've been sitting through these processes actually for a while. Um, you know, I was in the back of the room for all the various. Public meetings and work sessions and planning commission meetings and so forth for Eden Crossing, just to kind of see how that process. Um, went about and. In the time since we put our planning application in, we've, we've had a public forum. We, um, advertised it in the Ogden Valley News and. Put it on in concert with Ogden Valley Smart Growth. Um, that was at the Huntsville Library. We had, uh, two different work sessions with the planning commission and a couple of different public meetings. Um, you know, I'll, I'll say, and this somewhat is to jump on to something that, that Charlie said here. Um. Our experience with the public process that we did with, through this particular project was a lot different than what we saw with Eden Crossing. Um, and it's a different project to, we supported eating crossing, but th- this, this is. A, a little different than the approach perhaps in crossing is taking. And, you know, we saw frankly, much lower turnout. Much lower betrayal. Um. There were definitely people who were concerned, you know, we had, um, a, a lot of times the people that were showing up were nearby neighbors and, and stakeholders and. Those conversations actually were fairly, uh, productive. Um, and I think what we found even. For the few people who showed up at the first public meeting to, to speak out of concern or against the project. Um. They, I would say the majority of them either had, um. Fairly nice things to say about, uh, my company Cowboy Partners or the project. And their concern was perhaps with something else, right? So not that they necessarily supported the project, but they at least. Appreciated that, um, you know, that we had been engaging with the public and, uh, uh, appreciated some of the components. Um, of, of that. So. Um, the approach that I just want to talk through for just a few minutes, um, was put together, um, in consideration of the Ogden Valley General Plan. And the form based zone. And I would concur with Charlie that the form based zone, um, it, it. Is fairly holistic and speaks, uh, pretty directly to the types of things that, um. The planning staff and a community wants to see. And, and you know, down to architectural aesthetics, materials and so forth. So as far as a developer. Goes and you know, someone who manages planning and design, it gives us something to engage with. Um, and we, um. Took from it directly because our intent was to, well, you know, we, we agree with. What the plan is saying, we agree with the form based zone. We think it matches the vision of what we want to do. So, um, we hewed pretty close to it. So, um, you know, I, I think we appreciated the support from the staff and, um, we, we do think this would be a positive. Uh, addition to, um, the village center here in, in Eden. Um, in light of what's there and, you know, to the west of us, but also to what might be going in with Eden Crossing, right? So, um, you can kind of see the, um, the. Street regulating plan as, as you show it here, um, and how that relates to our site. Um, with the small lot residential, there's some multifamily residential along the highway. Um, the village, the vehicle oriented commercial near the intersection and, and some green space, uh. That's, that is separating that, um. Village oriented commercial, if you can move to that. So just broadly, I want to talk about how, have a look down. Um, I mean, this is how that kind of, uh. Goes out in a bubble, but diagrammatically, you know, from a broad vision, this is kind of how we see our approach. Um, to the site and how it might add to, um, the development of, of the village center here in, in the Newtown Eden area. Um. The, the, the first component is the, a kind of village commercial, right? Meant to plug into the space where Valley Market is now and for the commercial development that's expected. Um, around that intersection and the roundabout. Um, you know, our vision for that area would be to bring in, um. Businesses that we think provide neighborhood, you know, village amenities, both for the wider community, but certainly for. The residents that we see living in the area in the future, whether that is a kind of destination restaurant or brewery or gastropub or, or some sort of, um. Uh, you know, eating establishment. Uh, as well as retail that fits, um, with the needs of the community and, and certainly both the people who live there, people who visit. Uh, and the potential for second level, um, office or professional services. Uh, or, or even residential there as that's part of that particular use. Um, but our main intent is to have, um. Commercial buildings that are specific to users that we would bring in and we see as being, um, you know, really additive to the community, right? We're not looking to just spec buildings and fill them with whoever's going to pay the freight. We want to bring in someone we think is, um. It is something that fits here and adds here, doesn't necessarily compete with what else is already. Succeeding in Eden or what is going on in Eden Crossing, but something that fits in really well, um, a, as part of the village concept. Um. The, that, that village area is meant to have those commercial buildings along the road. Have some sort of promenade or pedestrian piece that would allow for connection over to. Um, the commercial that's there where Valley Markets building is now and connects through along our commercial buildings and up to, uh, a public park. Right? So the area that you see green, um, would be something that would be built out and developed and designed by us. Um, put in place and then meant for, meant to be available to the public. Right? Whether that's something that we are maintaining or something that we are doing in concert with. Um, it, you know, a, a, a public. Um, kind of parks that, that may come in and take that, you know, that's, uh, up for discussion and, and certainly we see the value of that. Um. As you move a, a little further north, then we start to get into what we'd like to approach in a really kind of village scaled. Um. It's small lot residential sort of way. Uh, and there's a couple of different components of that. And so I think actually as we can, um, move down Charlie, kind of see some of the imagery that we brought in as the. And type of development that we'd like to see in that commercial village. And then moving down, um, through, uh, the park and, and what that might mean. And of course there's green space there. There's some hardscapes for people to travel through. There needs to be some sort of infrastructure. We understand that attracts people there, whether that's courts or, or, um, you know, uh. Uh, playgrounds, elements that, you know, bring people and keep people there at that green, uh, at, at the public park. As you move further down and we go to, you know, we have a couple of different, um, residential components planned. One. Uh, on the south end, eh, end of the east side. Um, right now in our minds, we're identifying that as the area that's closest to commercial that's coming in. As a place that is perhaps most appropriate for attached, single family, row homes, some flats. That's a place where we'd like to come in with some workforce housing. Um, we are, uh, Cowboy Partners is, has been in Utah for many decades. We are primarily residential developers. Um, we've done all types, all scale, um, from, you know, top end luxury towers to, um, the most deeply affordable. Type of residential that you can do. We think that this particular site and Ogden Valley in general. Um, it is, could really use some workforce housing and we love those communities. They, um. We, uh, owned many for, uh, developed them, owned them, operated them for many decades. Um, and we think that that is a, a better approach here. Um. Just to the north of that particular area, you can see a, a label there called residential green. Um, and I should, I should let you stop here just on some image. So we want to talk a little bit about what that scale might be, right? We understand that. Um, specifically the form based zone wants no more than three levels, um, you know, thirty five to forty feet. Generally, there's a height limit that. Um, you know, keeps us more towards a smaller scale. So our thought for this particular area really is. Two story, maybe three story, leaving some room for roof forms and, you know, a village. Approach to both the scale of the buildings and engagement with the street. That residential green, you know, one of the things that was talked a lot about in planning commission was the idea that there needs to be green space on both sides. Uh, we had already planned that. We certainly understand, um, we, we want to have amenities kind of distributed throughout. This site. So, um, we are, again, we, we own and operate communities for the long term, and that's the intent here is to be. An owner and operator and involved in the community for the long term. In the residential green, we would, we would have our leasing office, all of our operations, maintenance, but also our amenities, clubhouse, gym. Pool, playground, green space, place where the, the residents, both whether they're, you know, in a workforce community or a market faith community, single family for rent. A place where we can pool and provide access to really first class, uh, amenities. And, uh, I, as I mentioned, as you move a little, um, and, and we'll have some images there, of course, of, of what that might be. You can see how we might start to. Um, bring in some of these amenities and bring in some of the project to border that. And that kind of speaks to. What will be building out on the remainder of the residential properties. You move down. Uh, one of the things that Charlie mentioned. Is the streetscapes. Um, one of the challenging things and the unique things about the form based zone is that. It does speak to those street regulations and the street regulating plan is really both. Telling us what it is we can build, but also creating a public fabric, right? A village network. Um, that ties us a, across one fifty eight, but then over into Eden Crossing as well. So we have done a lot of thought about how these streets are going to come in. Um, how we can bring in the right away that is asked for in the form based zone, but also. Create something that feels like a village that feels appropriate in Ogden Valley and in Eden. And, um, tied to that, we'd like to bring the remainder of the residential in at a single family for rent, right? Um, uh, single family detached houses, two, three bedrooms, um, garages. Uh, small private yards, recognizing that, you know, we're providing larger spaces and larger amenities at other place, other parts, um, of the community. And, you know, those again are speaking to the materials and the design aesthetic that is mandated by the form based zone. Um, you know, comes in at, uh, a, a scale and, and, um, at a size where we can, uh, meet the market. You know, provide market rate, first class housing, but also meet the market where it needs to be, um. And, uh, for this particular community. So, um, just end with kind of how, how that might look, right? These aren't. This is meant to be something a little bit different than, you know, three acre estate lots and large custom homes, right? These are, uh, even on the market side, somewhat more approachable. Fifteen hundred to two thousand square foot homes. And in some cases, perhaps twenty five hundred to three thousand square foot homes in some areas. So. Uh, it, it's meant to be, uh, a lower density, um, uh, you know, utilizing the lower density that's even available to us within the form based zone. And we think that fits here. We think it complements the commercial part of the village that's there and that's coming. We think it fits the higher density that is likely coming in Eden Crossing as well. And. You know, one of the things we appreciate about the form based zone is that we're connected to both like that. Um, almost twenty five percent of the project already as we've, um, thought about it is. Being given over to public use, right? Either public way, public park or some other thing. So. Um, we're creating that network that allows us to tie into everything that's going on around us. And, uh, we think that's good for us. We think that's good for that town Eden. But. Um. I guess I'll end with saying that, you know, the, we were, you know, of course disappointed by the recommendation, right? You know, um. I, I think what, what we can say is what I heard in all of the deliberations and in the conversations with the planning commission is that. Um, while we didn't have majority support, we, I think we did have a majority of. Planning commissioners who thought that this might be destined for some sort of approval, right? And, you know, I, I thought, eh, eh, at first I, um. And you know, I I thought a- at at first I um was encouraged by that and hoping that w- we might be able to collaborate and find some um stipulations that would allow us to gain their um their a a recommendation for approval. Um that's not necessarily the case. The uh of course, we were recommended for denial, the stipulations kind of run the gamut, there's some of them that were we were already planning on and aren't necessarily an issue. There's others that are somewhat a matter of degree, right? There there was some questions as we were moving through this process, uh you know, can you show us what it's going to be? And I I'll be honest, I'm I'm glad that we weren't necess- we didn't necessarily go there because uh ultimately, what we respond with on this site has to be somewhat tied with what we're trying to deliver in terms of all of the other things that come through um in a development agreement. And you know, as as we align stakeholders and we understand providing value and making sure that we're being additive to the community. Um but what we do on the site really needs to be tied with what's going on um with all of the stipulations that happen within our development agreement. So there are some things here that are not an issue, there's some things that we probably like to talk about what the scale of it is and what we can achieve with what we'd like to do at our lower density. And there's some things that are, quite honestly, whether they were intended that way or not intended that way, seem to be meant to you know, be a hurdle, i- you know, even if we are approved, you know, it's denial by another way. And we'd like to really talk about those and understand like what what those things really mean for the viability of this project. But thank you for allowing me to talk and I'm um certainly willing to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Commissioner Bolus, uh why don't we start with you, please?
Okay, now we're a little short on time, so I made just a few notes. With the motion, um looking at the street regulating plan, I think I misunderstood, I met with you Chris last week. I appreciated that, um I thought it was multifamily throughout the whole project, so it looks like Charlie, you can verify this, that it does match the street regulating plan as far as the uh small lot residential in the areas that they're requesting.
Yeah, keeping in mind small lot residential, you could potentially put up with four residences on one lot, but that's not what they're proposing or proposing to.
Um we also talked about the two existing homes and possible buffering around those, uh what that looks like. So keep that in mind, um. Number seven is not really a concern to me, the fact that it hasn't happened yet is and we can't just deny something because it hadn't happened yet, how long will we do that? So but I do um respect the planning commission members who want to maybe look at that, I don't I I agree with you Charlie, it's it's detailed and that makes it appear complicated, I don't necessarily think it is. But if, you know, if they want to address ways to make it less less complicated, I agree, I could swear that. Um the last thing we did have this conversation last week, Chris, about uh rental units versus owner occupied. Um there's been so much conversation, wasn't the Upper Valley and West River County about um housing attainability. And I really would just like to see that, I know that's not what your group does. I'd really like to see those opportunities more in this area than we have. Um other than that, the o- the last thing, which is also a point we discussed very end of our conversation, that is the TDRs and where those come from what it looks like to purchase those, um it's going to require TDRs and I'd like to have some indication of where those are going to be, where the sending areas are.
Great, Commissioner Faur.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, you're welcome. So first off, um you know, there's no question, Cowboy Properties has been around, partners have been around, they do a great job throughout the state and across the state borders and how I've known them for a number of years and I know that the product that they would put out would be a good product. A couple of questions um come to mind. First, I'm going to talk about the positives, I like um kind of what your forum based commercial areas look like. I think that that lends itself to good development in the future, uh whatever that may be from the residential side. So I think your concepts um make a lot of sense on the commercial side. Um the the part I struggle with, number one, Commissioner Bolus brought up, is uh just as a reference, when we did Eden Crossing, uh if you look back at the development agreement, the only nu- the number of units that was approved was actually a transfer of development rights that the developer actually took from existing land that he had and put him in that village, he didn't have to create any. He was only allowed the number of units until he goes out and purchases more units was what he had, which is what the general plan says, take them from sending areas, put them in receiving areas, which the counties decided receiving areas are the village areas. So I I I would, I'm hesitant, in fact, I you know, just thought about this 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 weekend is that if maybe we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit by approving subdivisions until they show that they've got the TDRs, I just wondered if we're
They'll have to show TDRs before they can get flagged.
Well, a- and I understand that, but I'm just saying with it kind of becomes down to my old development mentality, is I had to prove up a lot before I ever developed a piece of ground. I had to bring and solve a lot of questions before I ever brought them to even the preliminary standpoint. So I think, and again, as as we know that the TDRs are very critical there, that's that's a time for another discussion. But that's that's a question in my mind. The other question I have, I guess, is Highway one fifty eight is a demarcation, it's a pretty major route for residents in the valley, obviously Powder Mountain, Wolf Creek. Um I I struggle with the idea of splitting kind of the one side of the highway with the other. To me, I would prefer to focus on what's happening on the east side along Eden Crossing before we actually got in, you know, does that, and maybe you could show that that's not going to create a conflict in the future. But I I struggle with the idea, okay, having a development that crosses somewhat, you know, a pretty busy highway. Um actually, it's a state highway and whether UDOT would allow that use or not. But to me, it makes more, I'd rather go a little slower than put the gas on right now, my my personal opinion, this is personal opinion. I'd like to see how maybe we can tie that in. I understand that the grocery store does have property purchased on the east side, is that still correct? So I think I think there's a lot of opportunities on the commercial side as we work through the idea of housing and what type of housing that should be. I'm I'm all, I'm all for workforce housing, I mean, if you go to Sun Valley, you know what's happened up there. We have to start addressing workforce housing, we've done that when we had some discussions on the preliminary snow basin, we've done that with Nordic. So I think we have to look at that, whether, you know, this is the exact spot for the workforce housing, I, you know, I I think we need, I think there's might be some other areas that lend themselves to potentially multifamily workforce housing uh outside that location. But I just, my thought, no, no clear you know, up or down right now, but I think that I I would need to have more questions answered, especially the TDRs, especially the one fifty eight issue um before I was prepared to say much more on it. That's my thoughts, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I think you've kind of heard the the concerns with the two commissioners. I don't have a lot more to add to that, but have the same concerns. A lot of times when a developer comes in, they bring the water with them, they bring everything with them. And uh bef- a- and in this case, you'd have to have those TDRs brought into it with them. But uh maybe it just isn't recent, but in the last three, four months, I've become increasingly concerned about workforce, you'll call it workforce, but young families being able to build equity and wealth. And they do that through homeownership and owning property. You're guy, it's going to be a harder battle for me if these are all investment properties because the next thing we know, then we could get into STRs and we can get into all this other stuff. I'm I'm actually on the more of the side, I would like to see homeownership. So for, we don't even have to get to the density part, I'd like to see homeownership and not an investment by a corporation. So that's where I am, that's where I'm leaning right now too, despite where that is. I like the, I'd like Commissioner Fours and Commissioner Bolus's comment that one fifty eight is a big road and that's a and there, that's a a big deal, I I appreciate uh that can be a great defining property thing, I'm actually surprised that it gotten approval out of the planning. But I think on this one for right now, I'm certainly in the camp of of the denial of the planning commission brought to us, and so that's where we are with that.
Good, one thing, I think this will have to, one fifty eight, I think is going to have to be addressed at some point, obviously. This is coming in as one development, but whether it's one developer or two.
Or five, doesn't it?
Right, people are going to have to cross that road, so we have to address that somehow.
Oh, yes.
Um and the other thing is, Stephanie, do you have anything to add?
I just have one comment, um I think it'd be valuable at this point, I I like the idea that you want to go in the forum based direction because that's a, it's a, it's a new and it's a fresh perspective. I would encourage you to do an economic impact study for those parcels that you're proposing, if you haven't done that. And including that study, um the different types of development that you're, that you included in your presentation. Um Zions Bank doesn't, has a really good program, they can do it, his name Eric, I think he'd need in contact. Um I've also ordered tapestry reports for that, those properties and retail, retail leakage study for that properties. I'm very curious to see what the retail leakage would be with your proposed development.
If I may, uh you know, I I'm happy to, you know, kind of follow up on on all of these various things. Um you know, we uh a- as Commissioner Ford um pointed out, uh we we've developed for many years um all over the place and oh, we develop along busy roads all the time. Um there's nothing about what we might like to do here that is going to certainly require anyone to to cross that road, but uh we would agree that we want people to safely be able to enter and exit that road in a vehicle, but also be able to go across it, whatever their mode of transportation, walking, biking, what have you. Um you know, our approach to those sites would be able, would for them to be able to be, you know, operate independently within themselves, but we certainly, and we certainly would be wanting to participate with whatever we can do to make that road more approachable, both for our residents and everyone who might be coming uh to this community, right? Uh and of course, we don't control that, right? It's the state road, it's um but uh as far as what the general plan says we need to do, as far as what UDOT says we need to do. Um we engage with those kind of stakeholders all the time. Um and we know how to do it and we understand the importance of it. Um but there's nothing here that it, you know, we, our our residents are um y- you know, we we manage these communities, we think about the safety all the time. So we certainly want to develop these things in a way that allow them to not put our residents or any other community members in in harm's way. Um yeah, I think there is, uh I appreciate the um conversation, and I actually want to continue the conversation about the the of for sale affordable versus for rent affordable. Uh because our response is yes, right? We need all of it, we think all of that is part of a healthy um housing model. And right now, the tools for for sale affordable are very underwhelming, right? They're just in development, the state is starting to really weigh in on them. Um typically, right now, the way that you produce for sale affordable is you underwrite them with a lot of density of you know, other for sale market rate, right? And it just becomes a cost of doing business, right? And we're not necessarily doing that scale. Or and you know, beyond that, keeping those homes affordable for the long term really requires a program that needs to be in development with with the county. And I I think that's a conversation we'd love to join. What we do know is that the mechanisms behind for rent affordable are very understood. They're all, they're well developed, we know how to put them to use in a place like Eden, right? We've developed in rural communities using these programs and it creates a community that will be affordable forever. And provides a place for a family to come in, put roots, save money that allows them to get into that housing market, whether it's in an affordable home or a market rate home, and we think that that's a valuable part of this. We think it that plays a part, but we understand the concern. Um and you know, our approach has been for ranked here primarily because we know that that's what can get done and will remain affordable for the long term and we can control it, we can make sure that it turns out well, that it's operated well. And it becomes a community, you you won't really know it's a workforce community, it's just like all our other Class A communities and that's the way that we do things. So that that's kind of what's been behind that approach, but we we'd love to continue that conversation.
Well, good, because for me, I appreciate your pitch on that, but for me, I've got my sword pretty deep in the ground on making sure they're homeowner occupied. So I just, in fairness to you, that's where, that's where, that's where I am, not going to budge too much on that.
And that's where economic impact analysis of different choices would make sense for us to see that kind of data. And give you a better idea of what that funding would look like if you decided to transition from rental over to ownership type developments.
But here's the great thing, it's great to part Cowboy Partners involved because you have a great company and you're used to figuring things out and I'm sure you will here too.
We like the hard things, that's what we're built for, so.
So one other question, is just, just so I'm clear, was a hundred percent of this all rental, market rate or?
Yeah, I mean, that has been our our approach, right? We haven't designed something out, but we, you know, we've had some conversation with uh about like a a a small element of for sale and trying to figure out what that would be, I mean, it's not a, it's not like we're a large parcel, right? So that there's, there's not a an opportunity for a lot of that, but we haven't quite figured out how that might come in yet.
Got it, okay, got it.
Great, if there's no other questions, Commissioners? I think, uh Staff, is there any from any of you?
I think what I'm hearing is uh I'll I'll be to work with Chris on working out some of the details of a development agreement and then see you guys in about a month. We're going to answer some of these questions.
If he flips that number around in a month, that'd be good, but it may be longer, whatever works. All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion for number five.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Or adjourn, thank you.